Motion, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll, please?
Certainly, Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Ling.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Wilford.
Here.
Mr. Hurt.
Here. Motion to approve the agenda, second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're here today to get an update from the Cedar Valley Alliance and Chamber, and we have a team here, and we have all of us here, so we're looking forward to hearing your guys' very busy schedule. Tom, welcome.
We are here in force today for you, Mayor and Council. I just want to thank you for giving us some time to talk a little bit about what the Alliance is doing for the Cedar Valley area. My name's Tom Pennaluna, I'm the chairman of this Greater Cedar Valley Alliance for this year, and 10 years ago, this year was our 10th annual anniversary. We had our annual dinner about a month ago, I believe some of you may have been there. 10 years ago, we set a mission of one vision, one mission, and one voice, and that was to increase wealth and economic development, economic vitality through collaborative economic and community development. So, it's important for me to mention that, because 10 years ago, that's what we were attempting to do, that's what we're attempting to do even yet today. However, our mission, what we're attempting and how we're going about that has changed a little bit. So I want to talk just briefly about that. Our staff is going to get into some of the detail, talk to you in a little more depth about some of the programs that are going on, and some of the jobs that are being created and so forth. But first of all, let me kind of frame it up for all of you. Many of our local businesses are struggling getting all the employees they need today. It's because our workforce coming out of the high schools isn't quite what it should be, I think that's been acknowledged by them, and a number of other things. We're, you know, if we're going to continue to attract new businesses and grow our existing businesses, we're going to have to create community development types of programs that are going to create the kind of environment that will give us the ability to attract businesses to town and grow within ourselves by creating better employees and the kind of employees that we can actually put to work. The Alliance is doing some interesting programs today, like we have a program called Leader Valley that is a business economic initiative that we're working with the K through 12 schools, and today, one of those initiatives called the Leader in Me. We're implementing a program called Leader in Me, it's based on Covey's Seven Habits. The goal of that initiative is to put it in all the K through 12 schools in the Cedar Valley, every single school, every single child, regardless of everything. We're also working with higher education to create programs that are going to address what is actually lacking in the marketplace. So if we have a technical job that we're struggling getting enough people, they'll be able to train those people to better fill those positions. The Alliance is doing a number of studies, did a number of studies in the past, but I think we're going to collaborate with the school systems to actually do another study this year yet, to dig a little deeper into what the issue is of why we're struggling finding the right people, what we need to do to make that change. So, they've been a good partner so far, and there's just really a lot of positive things going on between the Alliance and the schools. We're making our communities better by, through an initiative that's a diversity inclusion initiative, that has really already had a lot of impact, and given us the ability to bring populace that maybe have been more challenged to get into our workforce, to open that up and bridge those gaps, and I think a lot is going on in that area. So you'll hear more from our staff about several other initiatives that are actually going on, you know, that is such as the Advanced Manufacturing Center in Tech Works, but the message that I'd like to leave with you is economic development is only followed by community development. And we see the need to develop several areas of our community, and the Alliance is engaging in those, so we can build up our community in the areas that we feel that we need, so we can start to fill the positions that we're having challenges in today. And that number really is real. I mean, as an example, we have just signed a lease in Waterloo by the Tower Park area and another building out there. We already have roughly 200, David, you probably know this better than I do, 290 people in a building out there on Kimball, and we have at least another office building that will employ close to another 300 people that will fill in the course of the next 18 months or so. So, we feel that we have a lot going on in this community, but for us to fill 300 positions, we only, I think the number that I saw the other day is roughly only 20% of all the applications that we review and interview, we actually would hire, and of those 20%, maybe only hire 15% of them. So, the challenges are real in the marketplace, and we're working on things that we believe we can have impact long-term on this community that is going to help us create a better workforce and a more readily available workforce, and attract business as well as grow our existing businesses. So, you know, I really encourage the city to continue your financial support to the Alliance, your dollars are well spent. We have a lot of interesting numbers, I believe, to show you that you'll see that from a statistical point of view, we're making a big impact on Waterloo and helping economic development by also encouraging community development at the same time. So, I'll, at this point, turn it over to Lisa, who will talk to you about a little more detail on the jobs that have been created.
Thanks, Tom.
My name is Lisa Scooball, I'm the Vice President of Economic Development for the Alliance and Chamber. Some of the stats I want to go over with you, and then I want to talk to you about a few of the projects that we have been working on, on the City of Waterloo's behalf with Noel Anderson from the city. Our annual goal as an organization is to identify 20 new opportunities, 20 business opportunities for the Cedar Valley region, with an average capital investment of $5 million. Our fiscal year ends the end of June, and as of May 1, we have reached the number 20 opportunities for the Cedar Valley area. Of those, 757 represent new or retained jobs, with an average capital investment of $8.1 million. For Waterloo, that specifically represents about 16 companies, four are existing businesses, and 12 are new project opportunities, meaning new project locates. And those new project locates, as well as even those existing businesses, represent food processing, manufacturing, durable goods, information solutions, and logistics. To get down a little bit deeper in the weeds and break down three projects for you that we've been working on the last quarter. One, as recently as last week, both Noel and the mayor and the city staff department were engaged in this project. We're working with a Fortune 500 company, it happens to be an existing business longstanding in the City of Waterloo. We have the potential not only retaining the positions that are currently here in this community, but also adding another 100 positions. And the wage rates that have been described to us so far are livable wage rates that we would like to see here in the community, both the city and the Alliance organization. Like I said, we have been working on this project for some time. I would say Noel and I have been working with the local officials since we learned about this opportunity for at least 13 months. We've been spending the last two months since we found out and were given a date for a meeting in May, which was last week, planning to make sure that we executed perfectly. Because as any other company, and we saw it last week with Deere, they do have options, and this isn't Deere, but they do have options for Creighton investment elsewhere within their portfolio of business locations. We're just working toward making it stay here in Waterloo. Nice thing about it is a lot of the physical infrastructure already here in Waterloo lends itself to this particular project. And I got to say, Mayor, that the exceptional city staff team that you have just really hit it spot-on according to what we've seen and the feedback we've received so far. We have a lot to do. This project, we may be looking at another six months to 12 months before we know whether or not it's a go, and then another year, at least another year, before something is operational. So, these projects don't happen overnight, but they become a process, and when you're talking about adding 100 jobs by an existing company and possibly adding another $40 million of new capital investment, this ends up almost looking like a new location in of itself. So, we will work through it, probably on a weekly, monthly basis with corporate officials to keep them focused and committed to expanding here in Waterloo, and in securing this investment for the City of Waterloo. Also concurrently, we're working with Noel on another existing company that looks like they may add at least another 150,000 square feet of industrial space this calendar year, at least start construction and make a commitment. And you should hear more information, and our staff will be working with Noel and scheduling some time to go out to look at this particular company's similar facility they built in another community. The company has invited us and the city council to come look at the facility and get a feel for it. It's a quality industrial building, more than just a typical metal, it has some architectural and prefab look to it, a nice facade, and a significant capital investment by this company. So, Councilor Brishy should be expecting some more information on that potential visit in the next couple of months. Also, an external end, both Noel and I are working with the local company, in fact, we visited with the local company last Friday. We're trying to collectively work on attracting this new food-related company. Originally, they were looking at greenfield sites, and they decided that they, excuse me, they decided that they really found the facility, the expense of building a new food processing facility daunting in terms of cost. So Noel had an idea of working with this particular local company that is food-related on doing something where the company can benefit from the physical and intellectual infrastructure this company has, but also this company is also willing to build them on his site, a freestanding food-grade building to meet their needs. And this particular project could represent, if we're able to get their attention, by this alternative opportunity for them. Instead of a greenfield, we could be talking about the creation of another 200 to 500 positions that this project would bring if we can get their attention. Right now, they're only willing to look at existing facilities and not greenfields, so this is our chance to get back in the game. If we're unsuccessful with recruiting this particular company, I'm working on a list right now of how we can model a similar plan to recruit other food processing companies and identifying those companies that can benefit from this leaseback situation that this particular local company is providing for food-grade space. So that gives you a little bit of flair of some of the projects that we've been working on that are related to Waterloo, of course, there are others. Those seem to be the largest ones right now with significant capital investment as well as significant positions. In addition, I'm also happy to report that we filled the Director of Business Retention and Expansion position. You may know Nate Kleber, he was with the Buchanan County Economic Development Group, he joined our staff on the first, and has been involved right away with some of these projects that I'm mentioning. And in addition to that, he is already preparing a list of Waterloo manufacturers that he will sit down and meet with and conduct an existing business visitation program moving forward, and include Noel on those as well as needed. And those interviews, if you're not familiar with them, they're important for us to identify opportunities and threats by existing businesses, and how we can address them either as a community or if it becomes a city issue, that we're on top of it before it's too late, instead of being reactionary in some cases. In addition, the aggregate information we're able to collect from all these businesses helps us frame our programming for existing business growth, business recruitment, and our workforce development initiatives, as Tom described. He's not the only company that is concerned about in the future. Without that talent workforce, we aren't able to realize the retention and expansion of our businesses, or successfully recruit new ones either. Three weeks ago, a young man by the name of Danny Lautick joined our team as our new Talent Solutions Coordinator. We had an opening, so we switched around a few things in economic development under that division, and created instead this position full-time that will help address the needs of our existing businesses like CBE, as well as our long-term needs for filling the pipeline. Collectively, we are working on our program of work, which will shape what it looks like in the next 13 months. We're doing that organizationally and with the Economic Development Program, and so with those two individuals on the team as well, we look forward to sharing those plans with you and the city staff in the coming months. So I thank you for your time, and if I can answer any questions right now, or can wait till the end, be glad to.
Thanks, please, sir.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Carrie Dara, I'm Vice President of Community Development and General Manager of the Tech Works Campus, so I'd like to share a few updates with you as well. First, briefly, on the community development side, Tom touched on portions of that with the Leader in Me initiative and the diversity inclusion, those are under the community development umbrella, as well as the Cedar Valley Leadership Institute. We will be celebrating their graduation next Wednesday, 27 emerging leaders from a variety of employers from the area. It's a great group, I hope you get to meet them, I'm sure you will, some of them you already know, some of them are your employees. They're excited, they loved the course, they love, some of them grew up here, many of them did not, but all of them came away from this course learning far more about the Cedar Valley than they did at the beginning, and having a much deeper appreciation for it, and want to continue their careers and their leadership efforts here. So hopefully you'll get to meet some of them. The other thing on the community development side with the Chamber Council, we are working with each of the committees on the Chamber Council, and really, from their leadership, Stacy Bentley and Eric Scovard, asking those committees to direct a lot of their emphasis in small business development. We see a lot of care with the community, or commercial and industrial side of the development with all of our existing businesses and recruiting new. We have the Main Street organizations that do a wonderful job in the businesses, with the businesses in their district, but there are a lot of other small businesses in the Cedar Valley that could use additional resources and attention, so we're really looking forward to developing that further. Then onto the Tech Works side, on the Tech Works campus, we did begin construction in Tech 1, Floors 1 and 2, using the appropriation that we received from the 2013 legislative session. That was also, you remember, the appropriation that purchased the 3D printer for you and I, that is housed in the Tech Works. And then the remodel and the renovation of Floors 1 and 2 was in preparation for the Iowa Advanced Manufacturing Center, which the Metal Casting Center and their 3D printing additive manufacturing portion will be a division or a subset of that Advanced Manufacturing Center. And that's well underway. The West Campus site work, that will be the land surrounding the Deere Museum and a portion of Tech 1, we'll begin all the contracts, all of the designs have been signed off on, the construction should begin any day now. Again, for a portion of that time, the delay was getting contract signed, and then it was weather, and now we're ready to go. So you'll see earth moving there. You've already probably seen some activity on the east side of Tech 1 with Floors 1 and 2. And then finally, if you noticed in the paper either Friday or over the weekend, our trip to Des Moines last Thursday for our presentation on the Waterloo Reinvestment District, that includes the majority of the Works Campus in that district. We had an excellent, I think, an excellent presentation, the mayor did a great job, opened things up, Steve took over after that. The panel, the staff associated with the project, the project in Des Moines, were very impressed by our application. We were not necessarily competing with two other communities, but we were presenting along with two other communities. They all could be funded, or none of them could be funded, depending on the value that they think that these projects bring to the state of Iowa. So, we went in with high marks, I think we walked out with even higher marks, so we're looking forward to getting the response from them on where we'll be. The decision should be made by the end of June, we've already received a notification this afternoon of just a few areas we need to provide clarification, but it was information that we are well aware of from last week. I do have some of the leave-behind documents that we provided for the state last Friday, I'll leave them with Noel, and he can hand them out to you if you're interested in learning the drilled-down details on those, so.
Mention the dollar amount that we're looking forward to.
Yeah, sure. It's a $12 million. The total fund is $100 million that was created last year in the 2013 legislative session to be distributed among projects that can be on a campus no larger than 25 acres. It has to have a minimum of a $10 million investment, that has a combination of hotel motel taxes, or use room taxes, and retail sales taxes in those districts. And then anything created there, the portion of those, either the room fees or the sales tax that would go to the state, will come back and go into that district. Nothing will be affected of those fees and taxes that go to the city, that will remain as is. We're asking for $12 million over a 20-year period of those increased fees that will be created because of this $74 million project that we're proposing.
Any questions for Carrie?
I just have one, a quick one. Can we get an update on the Green Project, the hotel and showroom space?
Sure, very good, because that was part of this presentation. So, that $74 million project that we're requesting the state to designate as a reinvestment district includes that Green Hotel project. So, the developer was there with us last Thursday, they have the commitments that they need, this will certainly make that happen sooner, but they are very committed to having it happen whether we get this designation or not. So, our understanding from them is that you should see more activity on that project this fall. Anything else? Thanks for your time.
I'll just mention, David, as a side note, as Carrie said, the developer was there for this Des Moines presentation, and I haven't actually talked to him for a while. I was very encouraged with his enthusiasm over the project. So, the commitment is there, and this project is going to happen. We've been saying that for four years now, but it is, and it's getting closer every day.
Yeah, they have signed leases now with the tenants, and so they have to perform. We would expect to see things moving around by the end of the summer on the site, in the building, moving along, so, yeah, financing's in place. Good afternoon, my name is Steve Dust, I'm CEO of the Greater Cedar Valley Alliance and Chamber. First of all, my job is always to say thank you, we appreciate the teamwork that you have with us. We are constantly, I can't tell you the number of hours a week that our teams are working together between the Alliance and Chamber and the city staff and members of the council, we appreciate that, that close working relationship that we have and support that we have from the core city of our economic region. This evening, you heard from our leadership, Tom, talk to you about the breadth of things that we are undertaking at the Alliance and Chamber, or at least gave you a glimpse of the breadth of things that we're undertaking over there. It's not often that during our update, you actually get an expansion announcement, I hope you caught that, that he's doubling his employment in Waterloo, and we think that that's an indication of the strength of our economy and our ability to respond to our employers as they have growth plans. Lisa went over a good list, a very strong list. When you compare the things that Lisa talked about this evening with what we talked about two years ago, night and day, the strength of the industrial and commercial base and the interest that they have in new investments, and the size of those investments, I think, are very significant. And that's true throughout the region. Carrie talked to you about the Leadership Institute and the kind of enthusiastic young leadership that's coming up through the ranks, that we have a chance to help mold and inform more fully about what's happening in their economic environment. Tech Works is moving along, as we've been talking about, and catalyzing more. You take a look at the kinds of projects that you folks are looking at now that's happening all around your riverfront and the Tech Works campus, and that's got to be encouraging, we hope it is. The IAMC, the Iowa Advanced Manufacturing Center that we talked about in great detail earlier in the year, that continues to take form and is bringing more and more attention from industrial operations of all sizes from across Iowa, is very significant. We think that we'll have more of that happening over the next year. We talked about our team, it has grown to, and changed. The nature of the work to be done has changed along with the new talent that has joined the Alliance and Chamber to serve your businesses and industries, and importantly, Carrie touched on the small business initiatives that we're going to be paying even more attention to over the next year. Also strategic roadmapping, just as you know, that from time to time, you need to take a look at where you're headed strategically as a community, we do the same thing with our organization. And right now, we're going through what we're calling a strategic roadmapping process, it's a refinement in our strategies. Several of you have been involved in that process, we want all of you involved in it. We're asking three or four fundamental questions about what makes the Cedar Valley great, what are the kinds of initiatives that we need to do right now to implement that definition, what are the barriers that we have to it, and what is it that you're willing to do as an individual? So, you'll either have been and will be invited to participate in that process more. So, we've got a lot of things going on in Waterloo and the Cedar Valley of Iowa, and we appreciate being able to accomplish that with you.
Thanks, Steve, and as always, we greatly appreciate your effort and your time to come to give us an update. Council, do you have any questions of Steve or any of the team right now?
As you grow and we grow, you grow with us. We grow with you.
Yep.
It becomes more and more evident of all of the things that you do on a daily basis for us, and it's all greatly appreciated, and we do appreciate this update that you bring to us all the time.
You know, and again, it's an open door, and clearly, if you have any questions, want to get together and talk about what we do for a living, or any specific project, give us a holler.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Madam? Is it time? No, is it time? Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Yes, Ms. Cole, here. Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here. Motion to approve the agendas proposed, and also the minutes of May 12.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. See none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. New business?
Madam Chairperson, I'd be delighted to take those items. First, we have Janet Wessels, Housing Quality Standards Meeting in Des Moines, July 7 through the 9, at a cost not to exceed $1,279.74. Next, Sonia Mayer, Bookkeeper Administrator Assistant, Financial Accounting and Reporting Training in Las Vegas, Nevada, July 21 through the 24, at a cost not to exceed $2,020.27. And finally, Abraham Funches, Executive Director, Rebecca Johnson, Human Rights Specialist, Shelley Kruger, Administrative Secretary for the Excel Conference in San Diego, California, August 11 through the 15, at a cost not to exceed $9,430. Motion to approve those three items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, have we discussed? The only thing I would add is that these are grant reimbursable. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Opposed, same sign. Those items pass. We have pre-ops.
Madam Chairperson, may I take the pre-ops?
Thank you.
The first is central garage in the amount of $2,820.88, plus $204 shipping and handling for mobile support stands. Central garage in the amount of $2,710.53, plus $550 shipping and handling for cradle, cross member, and frame liners for fire engine number 304. City?
City Clerk, in the amount of $1,500 for parking tickets. Leisure services, $6,021.26 for repair and replacement of plant beds at Sixth Street Plaza. Leisure services in the amount of $6,570 for advertising and advertising spot production for both Cedar Valley Sportsplex during Monday Night Football, Monday Night Football and various other programming. Leisure services in the amount of $1,208.88, plus $36.26 shipping and handling for additional jerseys for optimal baseball and softball. Leisure services in the amount of $4,762.38 for three beverage coolers and casters for Young Arena's concessions, operations. Leisure services in the amount of $1,575 for preparation and painting of Young Arena outside main entrance railings. Management and information systems, $6,135 for Barracuda spam virus email filter model ESF 30855. Traffic operations in the amount of $6,200 for installation of six traffic detection cameras. Traffic operations in the amount of $1,020, plus $200 shipping and handling for two aluminum signal heads and hardware.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Yes, sir.
Question, Paul. I was asked, the Sixth Street Plaza, is that back in behind Unique, like that, that bike trailhead, is that the location of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. It's an area exactly as you described it. What happened was the flood of 2008. It wasn't the flood that damaged this plant material, but it was the flood fighting efforts. We had a lot of equipment and, and volunteers and sandbags, and it basically wiped out a bunch of that landscaping, so we're, now we're replacing it.
Thank you.
Anything further? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those items pass. I move that we authorize budget line item amendments, items five through 11. Copies are on file in Ms. Chair's office.
Second.
We have a motion, second discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those items pass. I also move that we pay the bills this week, which are $2,550,899.48, 2,550,899.48.
Second.
Motion, second discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to all of you in chambers tonight. Actually, it's not chambers, in our law court theater. But anyway, welcome to this regularly scheduled Monday, May 19th, meeting of the Waterloo City Council. Madam Clerk, would you start us with the role, please?
Certainly, Ms. Cole, here. Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lind?
Here.
Mr. Morrison?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Thank you very much. If you would all join me, please, in standing for just a short moment of reflection or silent prayer, we much appreciate it. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to all of you in chambers tonight. Actually, it's not chambers, in our law court theater. But anyway, welcome to this regularly scheduled Monday, May 19th, meeting of the Waterloo City Council. Madam Clerk, would you start us with the role, please?
Certainly, Ms. Cole, here. Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lind?
Here.
Mr. Morrison?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Thank you very much. If you would all join me, please, in standing for just a short moment of reflection or silent prayer, we much appreciate it. Thank you very much. Our pledge is going to be led by me tonight. Craig Clark, who is supposed to do it, is out sick tonight, so if you would all join me in the pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. You may be seated.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
I move that we approve the agenda as proposed, and also approve the minutes of May 12th's regular session, also May 13th's special session as proposed.
Second.
Council, do you have any comments regarding the agenda of the minutes? Either one. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have three proclamations tonight. We're going to start with Mr. Brown and Ms. Boar. Sheila and Bob, would you come forward, please, to accept the proclamation for Senior Core Week?
Well, we appreciate you allowing us to do this.
No, 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 no. Come up here, come up here, come up here.
What's this for?
That's not for you. It's for somebody else. You know, you put a microphone in front of him, and he just stops everywhere. Are you, are you with this guy? Now, turn around here, do, do like this. And let, I'm going to read, I'm going to read something, and I'm going to give you a microphone. We have to do this first, because Bob's got to get to bed early tonight, ladies and gentlemen, so we'll get, we'll do this proclamation. You just don't know. Ladies and gentlemen, we are here tonight to celebrate and read a proclamation for Senior Core Week, and Sheila Boar and Bob Brown. And obviously, if you haven't gathered, Bob and I are awfully good friends, and Sheila and I are friends, so we're glad that you two can be here to help us celebrate this. And this is the City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation. Whereas, older Americans bring a lifetime of skills and experience as parents, workers, and citizens that can be tapped to meet challenges in our communities. And whereas, for more than four decades, senior corps, three, senior corps' three programs, RSVP, Senior Companions, and Foster Grandparents, have proven to be a highly effective way to engage Americans ages 55 and over. And whereas, 330,000 national volunteers, including 369 Black Hawk, Buchanan, and Fayette County volunteers, provide more than 82 million hours of service to our most vulnerable citizens while meeting national and community needs. That's an incredible number. And whereas, Senior Core volunteers build capacity of organizations and communities by serving through more than 65,000 nonprofit, community, educational, and faith-based community groups nationwide. And whereas, at a time of mounting social needs and growing interest in service by older Americans, there is an unprecedented opportunity to harness the talent of volunteers 55 and older to address community challenges. And whereas, the service by older Americans help those volunteers be active, healthy, and engaged in their communities, and helps nationally by saving taxpayer dollars, reducing healthcare costs, and strengthening our democracy. And whereas, the 5th Annual Senior Core Week, May 19th through the 23rd, 2014, is an opportunity to thank Senior Core volunteers for their service and recognize their positive impact and value to our communities and nation. Now, therefore, I Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May 19th through the 23rd as Senior Core Week, and urge all citizens to recognize Senior Core volunteers and programs for their valuable impact on our communities during this 5th anniversary of Senior Core Week. Sheila, I'm going to give this to you, and I will give the microphone to Bob, because it appears as though he wants to say something.
No, she has to have her first.
Okay. Okay, both of you do. Okay, ladies first. There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
In behalf of everybody with RSVP, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for recognizing our senior service corps. Fortunately, in Waterloo, we have two of the three programs. We have RSVP, we have Senior Companion, which Bob will speak to. We don't have a Foster Grandparent program, but Foster Grandparent is included in this. The RSVP project here in Blackhawk County has over 300 volunteers, and we finished up our tax season this year. We're completing over 1,800 tax filings to low to moderate income. We also work in the, very heavily involved in the Waterloo schools with education, literacy, and mentoring. We do a ship program sponsored by our sponsor, Covenant Medical Center, that helps individuals on Medicare resolve and Medicare-related issues. So, we're, and we have much more, and I could go on and on, but that just gives you a little glimpse of what we're doing. Thank you again.
You bet. Bob?
Yeah. There you go. I represent the Senior Companions, and we're in dire need of Senior Companions. You have, there's a qualification, though. You have to be at least 55 years or older, and be willing to volunteer for 20 hours per week. And you have to also meet the income guidelines. And if it's one person, you cannot make more than $1,945. If there's two in the family, you cannot make more than $2,621. And to be able to pass a state and federal background. You get a tax-free stipend of $2.65 per hour, mileage reimbursement, 45 cents per mile, and a meal reimbursement for $2. You have paid training, paid days off, and also paid holidays. We now have 56 active companions, and we need between 75 and 80. We also have 70 companions on a waiting list, so you can see we're in dire need of Senior Companions. And it, and obviously, you're not going to make any money at $2.65 an hour, but you do, it gives you something to do, volunteer and help a lot of people. The Senior Companion volunteers provide friendship and assistance to other seniors who need extra help with daily living activities through providing transportation, making a meal, helping with life chores, or simply providing companionship. Senior companions and their clients build lasting, meaningful relationships that are mutually beneficial. So, if you know of anybody or you're interested, we could use you. We thank you much for the time.
You're welcome, Bob, and thank you. And I'll just add my, that's yours, my little post, my little postscript to that. My mother came, lived with us a few years ago. I don't know if you knew this or not, Bob, but we use the Senior Companion program, and my mom was able to stay with us for almost two more years by tapping into that Senior Companion program. What an incredible asset it is that those folks that volunteer for that do, and, and they did. My mom and her Senior Companion formed a fabulous relationship for the rest of her life, so it was very moving. It was great. So, thank you, guys. Thank you for what you do.
Appreciate it.
Okay. You know the drill. You know what to come up and, and where to go. Okay, thank you. This is to, to celebrate emergency medical services week. Chief Pat Treelor from the Waterloo Fire Services is here. Whereas, emergency medical service is a vital public service, and whereas, access to quality emergency medical care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, a third of Americans rate their households as being very well-prepared for a medical emergency, and emergency medical service providers have traditionally served as a safety net of America's healthcare. And whereas, emergency medical service teams consist of emergency medical physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others, and approximately two-thirds of all medical service providers are volunteers. And whereas, the members of emergency medical teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through the 24th as Emergency Medical Services Week in Waterloo and that, in Waterloo, Iowa, and that we appreciate and commend our emergency medical services personnel and their special role in alleviating, in alleviating the misfortunes of our citizens in need. Pat, that's for you. Would you like to say a couple words?
Sure.
Please. There you go.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Council, for the proclamation. EMS is certainly changing, and the EMS from a decade ago to where we are now certainly has changed, not only with technology, but with the advances in, in pre-hospital care and what's been asked of the paramedics and EMTs throughout the Cedar Valley. Waterloo Fire Rescue runs, runs a 911 ambulance service here in the city, but we also recognize that there's a lot of volunteer communities that also run their community's ambulance services, and we also recognize that. Our main goal is just to simply get the right care in the right setting at the right time, and, and that's what we're all about. And we're fortunate here in Waterloo, because we've got two excellent hospitals, and we work with both emergency rooms there very well, and we've got a very good medical director that helps us in keeping current with not only the state guidelines, but trying to be on the, on the edge of being very progressive. And just like to thank you and Council again.
You bet. Thanks, Pat. Last, but certainly not least, Jim Koch. And Jim, you have some folks with you here today. Come on up while we can recognize the Fourth Street Cruise, something that's near and dear to all of our hearts. How are you, young lady?
Good.
Nice to meet you. Hi there. Can't remember your name. Hi, Chuck. Hi, Jim. Good to see you. Good to see you guys again. We're here for our annual proclamation for the KOKZ 105.7 Fourth Street Cruise Day. Seems like it, we just had that.
Yes.
But here it is again. Okay. Whereas, as a way of bringing back the fun of sock hops and cruisin', and cruisin' Fourth Street, a group of yesteryear cruisers began the Fourth Street Cruise. And whereas, each year, approximately 15,000 people attend the cruise. And whereas, the cruise gives those who loves, who love their vintage cars and trucks, an opportunity to show them off while providing a fun-filled day of activities for all of our citizens. And whereas, the 33rd Annual KOKZ 105.7 Fourth Street Cruise Car Show will be held at the National Cattle Congress from 5:00 PM until 9:00 PM on Friday, May 23rd. Whereas, this year's cruise, the 33rd Annual Event, will be held Saturday, May 24th, from 12:00 noon to 4:00 PM in downtown. It's just unbelievable. This has been 33 years, Jim. Now, therefore, I Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 24th, as KOKZ 105.7 Fourth Street Cruise Day, and urge all citizens and visitors to come to downtown Waterloo to enjoy all the activities. You can't help but have a good time if you should come. Jim, thank you. Would you like to say a word or two? You can. Well, just tell a little bit about what you've got to offer this year and what's going on.
First thing, we just want to recognize the city for acknowledging this as a, as a community event, and it is, it truly is. We know there's surrounding states coming to Fourth Street, Waterloo, Iowa, on May 24th to look at this town. Surrounding communities, surrounding states, the car show at the, at the fairgrounds is getting larger. Last year, we were up right around 700 vehicles that came out to that event. And if the weather holds out, it really looks like it's going to be a, a good weekend here this weekend, so. I'll put a little plug out to Amich Point. They, they design these, these T-shirts, and a portion of the, the funding for it this year is going to Retrieving Freedom. For those who don't know who that one is, it's a, it's a training group that trains dogs for wounded veterans to help them with their disabilities, and it's a really good cause.
Very good. Jim, thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Have a great weekend. We hope you have a good weather. Thanks, appreciate it. All right, on with business, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
I move that we receive, place on file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B4. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by our Finance Chair.
The bills this week are $2,550,000.
The bills this week are $2,550,899.48. Two, comma, five, five, zero, comma, eight, nine, nine, point, four, eight.
Second. Counsel, does anyone have any questions regarding the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Item number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Actually, wait a minute, let's, let's do more than two. Steve, we've got, we don't have any hearings, let's do two, three, and four.
Item number two, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the sale of two city-owned corn cribs located at 4012 Levercy Road to Brad Renner of Rural New Hartford for $200. Item number three is a resolution approving a variance to the requirements of the subdivision ordinance in Section 2.31, final plat submittal, Section 5.1 preliminary plat requirements, and Section 5.2 final plat requirements for Silas Klingeman Edition. And item number four is adopting a resolution approving a request by Echo Ridge Condos L.C. for the preliminary and final plat of Silas Klingeman Edition located at the southwest corner of West Fourth Street and Ranchero Road.
Second. Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding two, three, or four? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, those motions carry. Next three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
Move that we adopt a resolution approving the professional services agreement with J D Engineering of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount not to exceed $52,750 for design services for the FY 2015 Geraldine Road Phase III Contract Number 871, and authorize mayor to execute said document. Six, I move to adopt a resolution approving construction plans for private sanitary sewer serving Kenzel addition as submitted by Brain Engineering, Inc. of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, and Sewer Treatment Agreement, D N, D N R Form 29, with the Department of Natural Resources and the final acceptance of construction plan, subject to review and acceptance by the D N R, and authorize mayor to execute said document. Number seven, I move to adopt a resolution approving Amendment Number 16 to Contract Number 08-D R H-211 with the Iowa Economic Development Authority, I E D A, for the Disaster Recovery Business Assistant Programs by decreasing the total award amount from $2,115,662, $662 to $1,833,263 as of April 28, 2014, and authorize mayor to execute said document.
Second. Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding any of those three, five, six, or seven? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good, that motion carries. Next three, please, eight, nine, and 10. Mr. Welper.
Number eight is a resolution approving the Amendment Number 17 to Contract Number 08-D R H-011 with the Iowa Economic Development Authority for Disaster Recovery Business Assistant Programs by decreasing the total award amount from $3,29,809 to $2,942,363 for Round Four, Single Family New Construction, authorize mayor to execute said document. Nine is a resolution approving the Professional Service Agreement with A E Com of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $63,200 for engineering services for the C I P Pipeline Project, Contract Number 866, and authorize mayor to execute said document. Ten is a resolution approving the official statement for the Spring 2014 Bond Sales.
Second. Very good. Again, Counsel, do you have any questions or comments on eight, nine, or 10? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Number 11.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrison.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the third time and adopt an ordinance amending the 2007 Code of Ordinances of the City of Waterloo, Iowa by striking in its entirety Article B, Construction Side Erosion and Sediment Control of Chapter 4 Stormwater Management Program of Title 8 Public Utilities, and by substituting therefore, a new Article B.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding item 11? Third time? Madam Clerk, please, a roll call vote.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Very good, motion carries. Thank you. 12 and 13 are both setting dates of hearing and taking of bids, I think Mr. Hart can do those.
Mr. Mayor, in 12, I move to instruct city clerk to prepare specifications, bid documents, et cetera, for wireless communication, and in 13, I move to instruct Director of Safety Services to prepare specifications, bid documents, et cetera, for the F Y E 15 Police Vehicle Equipment Installation and Equipment.
Questions or comments regarding either of those two, Counsel? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Very good, those motions carry.
Mr. Mayor, for both of those items, I move to receive and file specifications, bid documents, et cetera.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Good, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution set a day, setting date of bid opening as June 5th, 2014, and public hearing as Jan, June 9th, 2014, for Number 12, and June 19th for the bid opening 2014, and for the public hearing June 23rd for the, for 13. And with both of those items, instruct the city clerk to publish notice of specifications, bid documents, et cetera, and taking of bids.
Second. Very good. Final time, Counsel, questions or comments regarding any of those? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, it was a short agenda tonight. We are done, that is the end of our official agenda tonight. It is time for oral presentation, so if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the mayor or council, it's time to do so, just step to the microphone, please, give us your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, Counsel. My name is David Goodson, address 226 Camel Avenue. Two things, one, I want to thank, personally thank the council, the City of Waterloo, for its support and assistance to Bossy J Promotions in the recent Regina Bell Concert. And to your consolation, I think Councilman Hart and Reverend Jones had a real good time that night. And so, the other thing, so thank you, another thing is, I want to share my concerns and support, only having one side of the story, for a longtime friend of mine, Mike Guile, in his recent termination, or whatever that situation is, but I want to extend my support and, and make the record known that I am in support of Mike Guile, not knowing the whole story. Mike and I go back a long way, over 30 years. We played basketball against one another, he at Central and Iowa West High, and then we worked together at Muthers Super Value, and every night after work, at 11 o'clock, 11:30, we go over to East High School, the parking lot, Reverend Holmes Church, those, those hoops have been up for a long time. We go to every night and play one-on-one, till about 1:00 in the morning. I think I won most of them. He had a good game, though. But anyway, I do want to just share my support for Mike Guile and his situation, again, not knowing the whole story.
Thank you, David.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Bill Shepherds, my name. 1522 West Ridgewood, Cedar Falls, and I conduct the Waterloo Municipal Band, and like the gentleman before me, I would speak in support of Mike. I've worked with him probably 30 years, setting up the band, chairs, stands, taking care of us when it rains, bringing us in and out, and also, like the gentleman, I don't know the full story, but just wanted to express my concern, and thanks to Mike for all that he has done for the band. How many of you have been to a Waterloo Municipal Band concert? That's not enough hands.
How many of you have seen me direct the municipal band? That's a better question.
I was going to say, if you want to see something that's pretty spectacular, I think it's June 10th, is that right, Mayor? Is that what we're shooting for?
I think so.
Yeah, he's going to conduct a march, actually, it's a march I wrote for the past, present, and future mayors of Waterloo, Iowa, and it's called the Mayor's March. So, if you would like to watch him in action, come on down, because the, the band is terrific, and the amphitheater is a wonderful place to play.
Thanks, Bill.
And you could probably even buy a beer, if you wanted, maybe, I bet, so.
And I think that's a free, they don't charge to come just see me direct, do they?
I think that's, we may change that, but I don't know, we might pick up a few bucks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is that free beer or a free concert?
David Dryer, 3145 West Fourth Street. I noticed in the paper, I'm not sure which paper it was, but there was a front-page thing with Councilman Welper on trying to sell a piece of property. I see in the article that was a minimum bid of $5,000. Haven't we already set a precedence that we're going to, if we don't tear it down, or if we do tear it down, we're going to sell the property for a dollar? So, why is this piece of property valued at $5,000 to start with? Queen of Peace was $72,000, we sold the ex-mayor roof for a dollar. I think that we are spending taxpayers' money to tear property down and then sell it for a dollar, where this person, and I've emphasized this before, I don't mind if somebody buys something for a dollar, but let them have the demolition, or in this case, the renovation, and at the same time, you're only giving this person a year. I think in the past, I read somewhere in the paper that ex-mayor roof did not meet the timeline, and you gave him an extension. So, you're, you're biting this person real bad, setting a one-year time limit, and we just, I hear tonight, we're going to sell some corn cribs, plus the property, for 200 bucks, and you want to set a $5,000 limit, minimum bid, on a piece of property that people are going to spend thousands of dollars to renovate? You want it back on the tax roll, give them the break, too.
Hi, I'm Carol Schumacher at Ada One Walgate, and I just wanted to come and say hello again, and let you know that my husband and I have been busy working on our property, finishing it up, happy that we've had an inspection from Inspector Grimm, and we've had our council member come by the house and tour it, and gotten real favorable reviews, and Inspector Grimm said, if everybody just fixed up their house like that, it really is an inspiration for the neighborhood. And we found that, we've been making friends with the neighbors. And I'd like to say that we are also pleased with the staff help that we've received, talking to the staff at the city about the properties, and we spend most of our time on the West Coast, and so, we will be working, doing some communications, some coming back and forth, but we wanted to let you know that we are very interested in investing in Waterloo property and in restoring some of the historical old buildings, that's what we're particularly interested in. So, I also just wanted to make myself available before I'm gone for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Carol, and, and we appreciate your efforts, and hopefully, we will have